All right, the time is now 7:30 and I will call our regular monthly meeting of the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees to order. And in accordance with Public Act 101-0640, this meeting will be held in person by remote attendance. And all votes will be taken by roll call. Do we, are we, we're missing somebody. Carissa?
Yeah.
Okay, well hopefully she'll, Julie, did you hear if she's, was she planning on joining us?
As far as I know, she was planning to attend.
Okay, we'll get started and then hopefully she'll be able to join in. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Yes, trustee Doherty is not present. Trustee Gagani?
Here.
Trustee Humphries?
Here.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yeah.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yeah.
President Graber?
Here, thank you very much. We're now on to agenda item number three, welcome to visitors. Not sure if we have anybody, but if you're there, we welcome you. We're now on to agenda item number four, approval of last month's minutes. Did anyone have any questions or comments regarding September 23rd, 2020, regular meeting minutes? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the September 23rd, 2020, regular meeting minutes?
So moved.
No second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the September 23rd, 2020, regular meeting minutes that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. So September 23rd, 2020, regular meeting minutes have been approved. We're now on to the September 23rd, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Did anyone have any questions or comments on the minutes for the September 23rd, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting? I know we'll be talking about this a little bit later as well, as far as the, the presentation. Okay, do we have a motion to approve the September 23rd, 2020 Committee of the Whole Minutes?
No moves.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to approve the September 23rd, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. The September 23rd, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes have been approved. We're now on to agenda item number five, financial matters. Julie, can you let us know how we're doing?
Sure, we are currently three quarters of the way through the year with these financials that are in your packet. So 75% of the year is gone. We are up to over 95% of our revenue has been received to date. So that is really fantastic news. Our property tax collections came in as expected. Also receiving that state, the Illinois Public Library Per Capita grant, you see that fully funded and, and shown here. I will say that sales of materials and the, the fees for rental fees, you can see were really impacted this year, but we are still running at 95%. I do expect us to reach 100% of our income by the end of the year. And then, oh, there's Carissa, hi.
Hi, Carissa.
I lost track of the link.
Oh. And then for the capital replacement fund, you will notice that there is actually an expense listed there for this month, or actually to be paid for this month. That was the roof core samples needed to create the specifications for this year's roofing project. So that will be reflected when we look back at the total amount for the roofing project, even though it's going to span the two different years. That also, just as an aside, we are currently have the roofer guys back up on the roof. Like right now, they're doing an infrared scanning thing that they do apparently at night. So yeah, that, that is going on. And other than that, the only lines that we see that are significantly remaining over budget are those maintenance supply lines. And that is as expected with all of the PPE and extra cleaning supplies needed. And that was all I had.
And Julie, I just noticed on the expenditures, we're at about 70%, which is good because we're still running, I guess, below budget on the expend, on, on the expenditure side. Is that? I, I'm sort of curious just on the month itself, because I know we went kind of below. But are we, are we kind of back kind of at expenditure budgets? Or are we slightly below kind of on a month by month basis?
We are, we're right where we usually are this time of year. The fall is when you start to see a lot of our annual expenses coming due. Plus, you're seeing a lot of those final quarter things happen. Our Swan quarterly fees came due again. The, the Brain Fuse, it's annual licensing. The annual licensing for our Creative Cloud software. So as you see those subscriptions start, that's what brings us more toward our full expenses for the year.
Good, thank you.
Two question. Do we anticipate that the property taxes are going to come in at our budgeted amount?
So far, they have come in at 95%. That's pretty typical. We usually get those little laggards until the end of the year, there'll be one or two additional payouts. So we will, we do expect to get somewhere in the 97% to 99% collection range.
So we don't have more laggards than usual. It's more lag than usual. That's good news. I was afraid that we might have a few since, because of the pandemic, but good.
Our local property tax group actually met just last week, sorry, somebody walked in and Jen did not spot them. So I was like, um, I gotta go find that person. That property tax group talks about what our expectations are for next year. We talk about the new construction that we expect. The township assessors do present at those meetings. And we were very, very fortunate that they, the assessors still anticipate. Everybody's been seeing their collections coming in about as anticipated, at least in our area. So we're very fortunate with our local area that we have not seen that, that lag in property tax. Not this year, anyway.
And the, it's so interesting how this, how this all plays out with so many people, I mean, I, I watched the real estate market closely and, and this is, Downers Grove just seems to be very hot right now. I think it's a lot of the people moving from the city to, or, or people who otherwise would have gone to the city, wanting to come to the suburbs. And so the values are staying up too. So we have the taxes coming in and the values for now basically staying where they were, if not increasing.
Yes.
So I feel much better now than I did during our March and April meetings.
Absolutely. And there is some fear about the, particularly the commercial property values in coming years. But it is important to note that we are on that three-year average. So it will take three years to fully realize any of that impact. So we are looking to see what happens in 2021.
Did, did we, and I think maybe we talked about this before, but is there, do you know like generally, like how much of the property taxes are associated with the commercial properties versus the residential properties?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but it is called out in our property tax breakdown from the county.
Yeah, I was really focused on the residential side because yeah, I mean, the commercial, who knows what's going to happen with that at this point.
Well, the residential is mostly handled by mortgage companies. And they usually pay and wring it out of the homeowners somehow. But the commercials, some, especially retail, a lot of them are having a little trouble paying their taxes.
Yeah.
And luckily retail's not a huge amount, but some of the commercials are having some issues too. We won't see that for a while, apparently.
Okay, does anyone have any other questions or comments on the financial matters? Okay, if not, or do you have a question camera? Were you going to move to approve the financial matters as presented?
I was going to move to approve the financial matters as presented.
Okay, do we have a second?
I will second.
Okay, thanks, Bernalli. We have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. The September 2020, or I'm sorry, the financial matters as presented have been approved. Thank you very much. We're now on to agenda item number six, public comment on agenda items. Do we have any public comments that were submitted?
We do not. No, we don't.
Okay. All right, then that also takes care of item, agenda item number seven, public comment on other library business. So we're now on to agenda item number eight. A, the discovery report from RGW Consulting. I would be, I would love to hear everyone's thoughts on just what they thought of the presentation. And if you had a chance, I, I haven't been able to dig into the report maybe as much as I would have liked in anticipation of this meeting. So I, not sure if we can discuss, but also further discuss at future meetings as well, especially some of the points related to kind of, I mean, to me, the big, the, the, and I, and again, I didn't get the chance to focus on it as much as I would have liked, but the idea of kind of like, where do we go from here? Like what steps do we take from here? Like, I mean, ultimately, it's good, like the reflection of, of kind of where we're at is important. But then how do we build on that going forward, I think was the, what I, what I thought was the, the most beneficial. But I'm, I'd love to hear other people's thoughts.
And just a quick note, my meeting with Rashida is on the 4th of November to do the debriefing session that she refers to later in this plan. There are some pretty concrete steps here. And as far as I am concerned, we will start following those steps unless I hear from you guys otherwise.
So the equity advisory team would be put together and then a strategic plan. And who all would be involved? You might not know the answer yet. But what are you, some thoughts even from the board of who all would be involved in putting together an equity advisory team? Both library staff members, the executive director, the board?
Or do we go beyond that and include someone from the community, some people from the community?
Excellent. Yeah.
I would agree with Dave. I think that all stakeholders need to be represented. So, you know, something I was thinking about when we got off that meeting because of our time was sort of like our meetings aren't closed caption. You know, we don't have an ASL person present at our meetings live or, or here. And so we're, we're cutting off a lot of the community that maybe would want to participate more. So I think that if we have this council created, and I'm only using my background from creating other councils, we kind of have to have a couple of people from different stakeholder places. Just so we're, it's well-rounded. We're not just talking about race, we're talking about age, we're talking about whatever we need to talk about. So I think that, that might take a few steps to, I don't know if it's the sad one to forth a few names. And maybe if we all have a couple of names that we want to present to, to be part of this council. I'm not sure how that would go about, but I just want to make sure that it's, it's well represented, the whole community.
Maybe publicizing it in the, in the emails and hard copies that go out. Once we're ready for that, to ask for volunteers and they go through a vetting process, but.
So I don't remember if Rashida addressed this specifically, or maybe it's something Julie, you can ask her about specifically about kind of recruiting for this advisory board. I know a lot of the conversations around these types of boards and, and all of these initiatives that are now moving forward with, you know, companies and nonprofits and libraries and all these different places. That often people of color feel like that, you know, they're being, they're being asked because they're a person of color. And that kind of, that onus is on them. And there, there's a lot of conversation around that. I, I know, I don't know what the, kind of the answer is because it's this representation, but we also don't, you know, there's real trauma there that, that we don't want to ignore. So I'd be curious to see, hear what Rashida had to say about that. And how to do that in a respectful way, in a, in a way that doesn't feel like a token kind of assignment for, for whoever, you know, whatever angle, dimension of diversity we're talking about. I think that would be something for us to consider, you know, how, how we, how we do the asking. And what it means to be part of it.
And that's one of the questions that I have for her for our debrief session.
My comments are mostly about around the section called challenges. And while I don't necessarily disagree with any of the challenges she pointed out. I have trouble, not trouble, but I'm, I'm, I'm personally challenged to understand a few of them. Not because I don't think they exist, but because I need perhaps some examples of how they exist. I mean, the question of, well, I got some notes here, but talking about the tradition of libraries gets in the way sometimes. And the, the passion for impartiality and neutralism. And my note here was apparently impartiality and neutralism is not always fair to everybody. And I don't disagree with that, but I guess I would like to have, see some examples or illustrations. You know, maybe from us, but at least from somewhere. Because I'm one of these well-intended people, but I, I think, but I need to understand some of the issues from the other side. I don't disagree with them, but I don't disagree that they exist, but I would like some examples. The appropriation of cultural comments and cultural concepts and icons and so forth from marginalized people sometimes are, are appropriated and used for purposes that they don't agree with. For example, well, I think I understand that and I, but I hadn't thought about that. And that's part of why this exercise is really good because, but I, I would like maybe to see an example of that. Maybe that's something that the, the advisory committee can dig into and, and find out from. Or maybe at some point, another session with the consultant might help with that.
I'm trying to come up with a good example and, and the only thing that comes to mind right away is in February for Black History Month, we did a presenter about Motown music and the presenter was an old white guy.
Yeah, that was, that's pretty obvious, yeah. Um.
Or the woman who did, dressed as a Native American woman, indigenous woman, but she was a white woman.
Yes.
That's another example. Or, I mean, institutionally, historically, institutions of academia are not inclusive. So if libraries are considered places of, of academics or learning, then they historically are exclusionary. And it's why, you know, people who live on the sort of southern side of Downers Grove, maybe would go to the Darian Library or a different library than coming to the Downers Grove Library, which happens all the time. If you go to that library, there are so many Downers Grove residents that go to that library instead of our library. Because they feel more welcome there. And they live in Downers Grove, but they see more people that look like them. And so that's just, that, those are the things, you know, to Jonathan's point, we have to figure out how to, how to change that narrative. How to make the narrative more exclusive, exclusively, not exclusive place and inclusive place that people don't feel that way.
Yeah, well, I brought up the example last month about people who look like, you know, as, as being exclusionary. And, but there's some more things in here, obviously, that we need to dig into. The, the MLIS requirement in hiring. That's something I never even thought of, but, and I still don't understand all the ramifications of that. But the fact that it's probably true, we, we post some of these positions, but people from the marginalized groups don't apply. And how do we maybe get a little less neutral and a little less impartial, maybe somehow and recruit some or something? I don't know. We need to find some way to make the library look a little bit more like our constituents.
Well, and I think that first step is definitely this equity advisory team. Because I thought that Rashida's point was well-taken in the report that in order to attract and retain our black, indigenous and people of color on our staff, we need to be ready to be that inclusive employer from the, the time they apply. And it's obvious that we aren't there yet. And so this is a first step toward what can we do to make sure that we are that inclusive employer? So that when we do get a, we can attract a diverse candidate pool because we're walking the walk instead of just talking about it.
Can I, can I ask, this is a little bit in the weeds, but I, I, at some point, it says in her report, how many people participated? You know, and of course, that was, that was us, ourselves, the board, staff and the community. I know how many of us there are and I, you know, and I, I guess I have a sense of how many staff might have participated. I was in one of the community listening sessions and there were very few people there. What was the other one like? Bernalli, you and I were in the same one. And I think there were like three other people, maybe? It was very few, but, but I was wondering what the Saturday session looked like and how many, how many people from the community actually did attend and, and participate? Cause I, I didn't see that.
I want to say there were five.
So a lot of the information that we're seeing is, is probably more reflective of staff. I mean, you know, numbers, sheer numbers, like percentages wise, you know, unless she is kind of placing more weight on the community conversation, which, you know, can be. But, um, it's, maybe it is weighted toward the kind of staff feedback, which, you know, is fine, as long as we're recognizing, we see, okay, that's where that's coming from. And, and understand that.
She did talk about a lot of conservative pushback and the North Side, South Side issue. And there were some other things that sounded like they came from the community meetings, but maybe they came from staff. Maybe they were suggested by staff because of their interactions with the public on a daily basis. I don't know. I don't, I don't dispute them. I'm sure we have conservative pushback. I mean, we certainly hear enough that DEI is anti-American. She used that terminology and then we hear that all the time. But not, I don't hear it in Downers Grove all the time.
We have gotten a number of comments. We've gotten a number of comments from patrons
Yeah.
About this very topic and pushback on why, why are we spending taxpayer dollars on diversity, equity and inclusion initiative? And, you know, why are we supporting Black Lives Matter? That was an actual comment from a community member sent to me.
And was it in one of the sessions or just of curiosity?
No, that was in, that was in response to the postcard that went out advertising the sessions and the other things that we were doing in the month of September.
So I think our, some of these things come from our wonderful frontline staff who interface with the public every day. And that doesn't diminish their importance in any event, at any way. Well, I was, another thing, one of the, one of the things to, one of the first steps was board development. And they were talking about a culturally, cultural agility assessment. I'm sure we'll hear more about that, but I'm not sure what that is, but I don't necessarily need to know what that is. I'm sure that, I'm sure that we as a board can grow in this area, just like everybody else.
One, one thing, Julie, I was just sort of thinking about. And we've done this through, through, you know, through my firm and things like that, where we've partnered up with, you know, local schools or people who, I mean, because I think for all of us, like mentors and just education in general are just so critical. And whether there's some way, I don't, I mean, this, this obviously adds more of a burden on library, but is there some way where the library kind of partners up with some school where there's kids who maybe need extra help, but can't afford, you know, to pay for a tutor or something like that? And there's some program through the library where these are, it's really targeting kind of the marginalized communities.
This is completely off topic and was something that I was going to talk about in my librarians report. And completely separate from our diversity, equity and inclusion initiative, but speaks to Jonathan's point. We are, we had a suggestion actually from one of our staff members who is a National Honor Society student who has to do tutoring as part of his volunteer hours for National Honor Society. Who, we created a tutor directory that's for paid tutors. He suggested that we create a tutor directory for National Honor Society kids seeking to do volunteer tutoring. Now, it may be going to a different audience and of course, we will need to work with the school to make sure that we have permission to give out the kids' contact information, yada, yada, yada. But yes, we are already looking at, at how we can help get, offer tutoring to folks who maybe can't afford it. Or folks who may just need a one-shot tutor. Anyway, that's completely off this topic.
Great idea, but it fits.
But to Jonathan's point, when I had lived in the city, I used to tutor Cabrini-Green kids. And it was eighth graders that needed to pass the constitution test. So that might be a topic to focus on too.
Well, and I, and I think, and we don't have to dwell too much on this, but it just, to me, the, the other piece of it is, you know, you know, kind of the mentoring side where there's, this takes more time, but it's where somebody is able to sit down with someone and say, this is what you, like, how did Jen get to this point in her life? And she can talk about kind of the steps that she took in order to do that. Because I think there are a lot of people who really just have no idea where to start. Or like, what, what do you do? Or the idea that, you know, can I do this? You know, is this possible? And it's much, it's, it's much easier when you can, when you can show it to them in sort of the bite-sized steps of like, this is what you do. You finish high school first, you know, then you go here and then you, and you just work it right through. And it just, I, I mean, to me, I, I wasn't, I just think that's, that's an angle. I'm not, it obviously isn't like fully. I wasn't, I just think that's, that's an angle, I'm not, it obviously isn't like fully developed, but I'm just thinking about it because it was so important to me, kind of through my kind of development, like the mentoring and the education were just absolutely critical. And I had it, so, but there are a lot of people that don't.
And I think that piece comes in where Rashida talks about partnerships and programs. And we already have such strong partnerships with our schools. And I think that we can look for who those other partners could be and how do we meet those needs? But overall, I think one of the thrusts here is to not decide what other people need, rather bring those folks in and let them tell us what they need. So that then we can react, respond, make sure that we're the welcoming environment that, that is welcoming to them, to every group in an inclusive way.
And we need to seek out some of the marginalized groups. This report talks a lot about the North Side/South Side split. And I spent 75 years of my life on the North Side of Downers Grove. And so I may be, I'm part of the problem perhaps. I live on the South Side now, but not really, so I'm sort of in a bubble, but I think that when we start looking and start recruiting, we need to, you know, in the, not being too fair and trying to maybe emphasize the South Side a little bit more. For example, South Side versus North, South High versus North High. South High is a much more diverse school than North High. And I think there's more that we can learn from down there perhaps. Forgive me for saying down there, but you know what I mean. So that's just an example of maybe not being totally fair and impartial, but seeking out some of the people we need to listen to.
And I think the, sorry.
I, I was just gonna say, I think that goes back to your original question about, or kind of questioning of the neutrality comments, because those of us who sit in a relatively privileged position or those institutions that sit in a relatively privileged position see themselves as neutral. You know, like, like, like we're not taking sides or being impartial, but, but, but like in this example, we don't see when we're not because of these kind of historic or, or, you know, ingrained imbalances of power. So it's not necessarily that, I think, this is a big conversation in my world right now, so I've been thinking a lot about this. And it's, it's also, you know, it's not that you, you say, we're not neutral anymore. It's acknowledging that it might not even be possible to be neutral. And how do you acknowledge those different perspectives?
Yeah, thank you. I don't know, I just use myself privately and maybe more publicly as one of, as an example of, again, I refer to well-intended people and I think I'm a well-intended person, but I make a lot of mistakes and I don't even know I'm making them.
And I think that's what the board development pieces and the staff development pieces are really looking to get us started. The, as a staff, we don't even have the common language yet to engage in this kind of work effectively. And so we're, I was likening it to, you know, we're not ready for the 100 level class yet. We, we have to do the, the O99 because we're not there yet. We, we have to set, set a foundation. And so that's really where, why we need to get this started as soon as possible and see what we can accomplish as as quickly as we can to, to get that, those first steps made.
I, thank you for saying that, Julie, because I think that it's wonderful that there's suggestions of all these things that we can do. But one, I wouldn't want us to fall into a position of like saviorism, because it's very easy and I can hear comments that are being made, very easily fall into that. And, you know, for marginalized people or people of color or Black Indigenous people of color to want to apply at the library, it has to be a safe space to start with. And if I'm in a safe space, they're not even gonna apply, people aren't gonna apply. I mean, it took a lot of convincing for me to want to sit on this board. And that's because I sit as a chair of a DEI council, that's what I do. And it was even hard for me to want to come and sit amongst you all. And I am a privileged woman, I live in a nice house in downtown Downers Grove, so I'm talking about just the color of my skin. So I think that when we started our DEI council, the first thing we did was come up with a common language, because people will say things that, that are hurtful or comments that are, you know, ableist comments. I just was in a meeting before this where someone said they had a blind spot and then someone else caught them really quick in the chat and said, hey, that's an ableist term, using the term blind spot. And those are all things that we need to rewire our brain. And so until the space is completely safe for someone to apply and want to work at the library, we have to create, we have to create, like Krista pointed out, like a token. We don't want to be a token person, you know, and, and so safety is paramount. Communication is, there's just so many other steps to get to before we get to doing other things that might, we think are helping, but actually we're harming. So I just thank you for saying that, Julie, that common language piece is so, so, so important.
And the whole like coded language thing, like once you start getting into, on, you know, you, you flip your lens and, and you start looking at it in, in a different way, suddenly you catch things about the way that you talk about certain subjects that say, oh, wait. Oh, now I, now I get that. So we're gonna start, we're gonna start there, how is that? That's, that's where we're gonna start. I'm gonna start with a conversation with Rashida next week. Jen and I have been back and forth, we're not sure yet about, we usually do a staff in-service day in January. I'm not sure we're gonna be prepared to do that, but that, that all-day in-service is kind, will kind of be our focus, something to that effect, for really kicking this off with the staff. So we'll be having that conversation. And then as far as the equity advisory team, I will be definitely seeking Rashida's support in how we get that off the ground in a way that we do get the representation of different groups in the community, from the staff, and potentially even from you, the board. It would be great to have at least one board representative. So I'm just, you don't have to do it now, just put it in the back of your mind and think about it for a little bit. But I also thought it was very interesting Rashida's comment in the report about offering an honorarium for, for any outside person who is serving on that, on that team. So I'm gonna get this off the ground and I anticipate coming back and reporting to you all on this again in November and letting you know where we've gotten to.
Excellent. Thank you very much, everybody. Looking forward to future discussions and continuing to move this forward. We're now on to agenda item 8B, election of board officers. So how do we want to proceed with this, Julie?
All right, this can be as complicated or as simple as you all want to make it. It's actually very, it's, it's the tiniest little paragraph in your bylaws. So officially, we should nominate for the president and secretary position. In the past, we have had both other folks nominate someone or self-nominations. And yeah, whoever's up for it, John has now served for three years as president. He started in a one-year unexpired term when Wendy Green went off the board and then was elected again in 2018. And Dave has been serving as secretary since 2016.
So the silence is deafening. I'll break the ice. I think, even though Jonathan has been president for three years, I shouldn't say even though, I think he's done an excellent job. And I would nominate him to continue. And that can be an official nomination if you like. Thank you very much.
Is everybody just looking at Jonathan to continue as president so they don't have to do it? This is the, the sense that I'm getting here.
I'm gonna delegate more authority to some other roles here.
I, that, that's not my, that's not even a motivation for me, I'm, I'm, I really meant what I said.
Thank you, Dave, I appreciate it. I, I think I need a vice president, but maybe we'll work on that role next.
Yeah, that's not in the bylaws, but we could invent one anyway.
Well, can't, I mean, we can change the bylaws though, right?
We can, we can add any officers we want without changing the bylaws.
We can all be officers.
There you go.
Do we have a second to Dave's motion?
I'll second.
Okay, now Julie, should we do this and then do secretary, or should we?
Either way.
Okay, I'll, I'll.
If you, if you, if everybody's done, you can close nominations for president, open nominations for secretary, and then do it as a slate of officers if you only get one.
I, I'm not sure if I fully understood that, but if I can nominate Dave, because I feel very comfortable with him at my side, you know, in, in helping to, to run the board and, and he's been a mentor to me on the board for the past few years. So I would, if I can officially nominate Dave, I, I, I'm doing that at this, at this point. Do we have a second to nominate Dave as the secretary?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Now, do we have a, now do we need a?
We need to be more nominations.
A roll call to close the nominations. Okay, we have a, we have a motion that has been seconded, that has been seconded to nominate me as president and a motion that has been seconded, seconded to nominate Dave as secretary that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll, or I guess the roll call to close nominations?
You have some, somebody has to move and second to close nominations and then we do the roll call. At least that's, that's how we did it in 2018, I already looked it up, so.
Yeah, that's what Robert's rule says.
Yeah, so somebody has to, yeah. Motion and second to close all the nominations and then we'll do roll.
Okay.
I will, I will move to close the nominations.
Do we have a second?
I had saw Krista go off unmute, so I was waiting. I will second.
Okay, then what now, Caitlin?
Now I will do roll call for closing the nominations.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Doherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia. Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Greber.
Yes. So now we need to have a motion to approve the nominations, is that the next step here?
Accept the slate of officers as presented.
Right.
Okay, you have a motion to accept the slate of officers as presented. Swasna, Bernalie, Cam, Charissa?
I will move to accept the nominations, the slate of nominations.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Greber.
Yes, thank you very much. That was, that was more difficult than it should have been. All right, we're out to agenda item 8C.
Thank you, everybody.
Dave, were you saying something? Sorry.
I just said, thank you.
Yes, thank you. We're now onto agenda item 8C, employee vacation carryover maximum for 2021. Does anybody have, or I guess Julie, let us know what's, what's this, this agenda item is all about.
So according to our personnel policy, we, people can only carry over one prorated week per year. So at the end of the calendar year, you can only carry over one week of vacation time, whatever your prorated amount is. We would like to increase that to two weeks for 2021. A lot of people did not get, use their vacation time this year, as you know, many vacations were canceled. We also, since we have reopened to the public, had, because we are staffing those additional three public service roles, the curb side and the door greeters, we have not had a lot of availability for staff to be able to take a huge amount of time off, even though we're not open our full number of hours. So I would like to allow us to open that up so that our folks can carry over one additional week from 2020 to 2021 with the theory that it will all go back to normal in 2021, oh God, we hope.
And you don't foresee any issues if people are taking an extra two weeks of vacation in 2021?
No, we generally don't have a, a huge amount of issue when, when they have the full year to take all their vacation time. Plus, a number of people would like to save that additional cushion in case they get sick. Or a family member.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think this makes sense, I mean, and it's, it's being, you know, sensitive to the, yeah, what happened this year and, and being, you know, more flexible for the employees, so I, I support it. Dave?
Uh, yeah, I, I support it also with the caveat that I, whenever we get back to normal, whatever year that is, hopefully next year, I would like, I would probably be in favor of reverting back to the existing policy.
Oh, this is a one-year additional carryover, this is, this is to make an exception not to change the policy.
Okay, good, because I, I, I think it's important that people, when it's possible, which it hasn't been this year, but when it's possible, I think it's important that people do take their vacation.
Yeah, absolutely.
Carrying over is not always a good idea, but this time it is a good idea.
Absolutely. Do we have a motion to approve agenda item 8C, employee vacation carryover maximum for 2021?
I'll move to.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead, no, it's fine, you, you were quicker on the draw. I'll second, I'll second Dave's motion.
Don't move then, I move.
Okay, we have a motion to approve agenda item 8C by trustee Humphries that has been seconded by trustee Doherty. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty.
Yes.
Trustee Doherty.
Yes.
Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Greber.
Yes, thank you very much, agenda item 8C has been approved. We're now on to agenda item 9A, the bylaws revisions. I think this is our third reading. I reviewed them, they look good, at least to me. Does anyone have any questions or comments regarding the bylaws revisions? Do we have a motion to approve the bylaws revisions? Okay, do we have a motion to approve the bylaws revisions?
I move to approve the bylaws revisions.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to approve the bylaws revisions that has that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty.
Yes.
Trustee Gagani.
Yes.
Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia.
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton.
Yes.
President Greber.
Yes, thank you very much. Agenda item nine A, the bylaws revisions, has been approved. We're now on to agenda item nine B, the library director evaluation form and process. Charissa, are you is this something that you're could is something that you could talk about a little bit this evening?
Sure, um, yeah, I I think I kind of went through the thought process last time and now we're kind of looking at the output of that process, um, which which are a series of um, two forms and kind of an overview of the timeline, a proposed timeline for that, for for using these forms and kind of putting them into place. So um, there's there's um, again, I think three three elements overall. There's kind of progress on on annual goals. Now, this year will be weird because we obviously Julie did not set annual goals for this year, so we can't really, you know, evaluate that. Um, but certainly that, you know, the the making, the creation of the goals for 2021 would be part of the timeline moving forward. Um, there's a a self-evaluation and I think, again, I think all the questions are fairly, it could be answered without having set those annual goals. They're kind of goal agnostic in a way, so I think we could go through that and and address our or, you know, Julie could fill that out based on her experiences for the year. And then there's the um, I'm kind of going backwards up through the through the document here. Um, and then there's the director evaluation form, which is, I I view it as really a starting point for our conversation as a board during that closed session meeting. Um, when when we kind of talk about about the evaluation and come to some, you know, alignment around, um, I think the the compensation mostly, right? I think that's one of the key decisions that are related to this. And so from my perspective, um, I I would love, I mean, you know, kind of just, I kind of made this stuff up, you know, and cobbling things together and understanding kind of what what the job description, what the job description is and 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 what my experience has been with with this type of thing and and with, you know, with with the library so far. Um, so I, you know, if there are things that we need to tweak or change around, especially around the, I think, the evaluation form, which is our tool, really, uh, ours as a board, to talk through the process. Um, it'd be good to hear about the main, the one thing that I still have a kind of a question, you know, and maybe it's a question for all of us, but I I know in my own mind, the last element, um, which is on page sixty, um, staff relations, that was one area where I wasn't sure that us as a, we as board members would have enough direct experience to be able to accurately kind of reflect on that. Um, I think it's an important, it's absolutely an important thing to be evaluated on. I mean, you know, in my own job, I I feel like that's a really important element. I don't know if we as board members see that. Um, and if we don't, then then where where does that information come from? Do we do we disregard that element of of the job? I I hope not, but I also don't know what other mechanism, you know, by which we can gather that feedback.
Undercover board trustees, the new TV show.
I think it was, it's interesting you say that because, you know, going back to the Rashida, um, whatever, I can't think of what it's called, her discovery, we heard that the staff feels very safe with Julie, like Julie in this case. And so that was such a great opportunity because we had that, but I know we won't have that every year. But that was such a wonderful opportunity for us to see how the relationship is so strong. I I wish we had something similar to gauge that every year. That would be nice, or however often we do this. I don't know what that would look like, though, like blind, like a little like suggestion box. I don't I don't know, like, how we how we measure that.
Yeah, this year was unique in that way.
I agree that we don't have a day-to-day insight into that because we, if we're doing our job as a board, we're not looking over her shoulder all the time on that sort of thing. But uh, the the language you have in here, I think, uh, supports and encourages staff development and professional growth, delegates authority. Uh, I think we do have glimpses of that. And so there are, there are some things that we can, I mean, this this probably, if if we were ranking these, it probably wouldn't be number one, but I think we can still comment on it, at least in some years and if.
Um, the comments made, Barnali and and Dave and Charissa, the I do think this may be one of the areas where Julie in her self-assessment could provide some examples of what, you know, of how she's, you know, handling staff relations. I also think there's um, kind of like the data and the data sometimes can can go, can sort of unfairly affect you either way, but but, you know, things like staff retention, um, you know, which which could have, could provide some indication of kind of how Julie is, you know, kind of handling the staff. Um, I, so so there, yeah, I I I agree, it's it's tough to do this without sort of formally getting the staff involved, which, you know, I'm not sure we really want to do that. Julie, what were your thoughts on just the form and the format and and just the the process for your evaluation?
I really like the form, the way you guys, the way Charissa put it together. I think it really does speak to the job and um, I know it's the staff relations piece is always difficult, but this really does look at my job as supporting you, which is one of, which is the number one thing that I do. And I think this really reflects that most important aspect of my job. And I really feel like I've got some um, in the self-evaluation, I've got a lot of latitude to give you guys as much feedback as I need to about, you know, what's what else has gone on during the course of the year.
Yeah, I'm really happy to hear that that comment because I was trying to think of a way I could ask that question and I was glad that Jonathan asked us, asked it. Um, I'm I'm not asking Julie to write her own job description and her own and our editor own job evaluation here, but she has had a lot of perhaps more experience at viewing these things over the years than we have. And so I'm 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 interested in her comments, although she doesn't get a vote.
Exactly, although I do appreciate that it is a very streamlined process, the way that Charissa has proposed it and the way that you all have discussed it, because um, the one trap that I've seen some previous boards fall into is dragging out a process and making it just time-consuming and tedious for all involved.
No, I don't know if it was Charissa or you, Julie, but the 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 whole, like, the dates, I mean, that's 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 fantastic to have it like, this is what we need to do in June, this is what we do in September, this is what we do before the October board meeting. So it's very, in in the fact that the form itself is essentially two pages, two, there are three pages, so it's not, you know, should be should be, you know, overly time-consuming.
Yeah. Part of me wondered that on when it came to the the suggested timeline is that I part of me wishes it could be compressed a little bit. I don't know whether it can be reasonably or not fairly, but uh, we're asking her to write a job, a uh, asking our director to write a a self-evaluation of the year when only three quarters of it have passed. Um.
Pretty typical. That's pretty common.
Some sometimes in in some organizations, you 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 don't approve, you don't evaluate until the year is over, but that makes it difficult to, for budgeting purposes. So I realize that. So I'm I'm okay with this. I mean, I think it's an outstanding job and I think we can evaluate it this year as we exercise it for the first time.
And and one thing about the the timeline is I think it can be relative. I mean, I I wrote that back, what, now six weeks ago or something? So when when it still was possible to follow this, which is, you know, kind of not anymore, right? So I and I, the one thing I wasn't sure about was, you know, the um, if if one of the, one of the outcomes of of this process is a recommendation for merit increase or or that action, is there a, is there a, I think I might have asked this last time, is there, is there a time by which that needs to happen? I mean, does it, does it need to be the end of the year or or does it kind of really not, in the end, not matter if it were shifted one month later so that, Dave, to your point, more of the year is gone by the time, by the time we're asking Julie to kind of reflect on it? I think that's that's a fair question and I I it could shift. I just don't know if there's kind of financial implications, budgetary implications there.
I don't know whether the village has any special rules on that or not, but uh, in practice, we've, we've already approved our budget and the village is going to approve the total budget very soon, or at least by early December. And um, you know, I think anything we do is going to be within the budget. And so I I in in many, over the past years, I think we've normally done it in December after the budget was already approved. It's just that um, you know, that one line item might change, but the overall budget doesn't change significantly. So I think we go ahead.
I wasn't sure if you were finished.
I'm sorry.
No, I I I think from my perspective, the um, the what what any increase, individual increase, whether it's Julie or anybody else on its own, will really have essentially no impact on the overall budget. So I'm not really concerned about, you know, whether it's sort of built into the budget or whether we do it at a subsequent date. I mean, we have unexpected expenses come up all the time that we have to approve that don't necessarily fit within the budget, just like we had this year. But then we have other expenses that are less than we expected and we have some years where we go over budget, like in 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 some years where we're under budget. Most of the years we are under budget. So, I mean, I I view the budget as being, um, I mean, it's more than aspirational. It's like, let's do our best to stick to the budget, but um, to the extent that there's some minor differences, I mean, that's, I I'm really not concerned about that. I mean, I I'm more concerned about the, we have to unexpectedly replace the roof, you know, that sort of thing, which which obviously isn't the case. We've planned for it. Um, but but making kind of adjustments along the way, I'm very, I I I personally very comfortable with it, you know, in in knowing that we can't, we're not going to predict these things with with precision, you know, for the following year. I think every year I've been on the board, we've we've ultimately been under budget, which I attribute that to Julie's stewardship of the library, um, which has been great. Um, so, you know, there there will be years presumably where we're not below budget. And that's, it it doesn't mean that we did something wrong, it just means that we, you know, there were expenses that were maybe unexpected that that ultimately um, we had to account for.
And just um, for uh, to speak to the way the raises are generally done, um, we generally give raises effective January one or first pay period of the new year. And the only real notice that we need is a pay periods worth so that Caitlin can get that put into payroll.
So we can set that line item at a December board meeting with, that's no problem, right? Because the December board meeting is usually the second week of December. And that's the way it's been typically done for many years, I think. The only, the only way to compress it a little bit, I guess, would be if the if the if the evaluation came to the board at the November meeting and then the November meeting was the, was the closed session and the board evaluation and then the goals and setting the merit pay thing would both happen in December. And I don't know, that that may be too much. So I don't know, does anybody else feel uncomfortable about evaluating nine months or? I mean, she will write an evaluate, a self-evaluation of nine months. We'll actually be judging her on ten or eleven.
We also, Dave, Dave, from my perspective, I mean, it's it's one thing if Julie were brand new to this, to this library, but we, I, we also have, I I I personally have, you know, three to four years of experience with her. So I'm not going to be focused next year on what Julie did between January one of twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one and September, October of next year. Like, I'm looking at the 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 kind of the full context, um, you know, of her, you know, of her experience and what she's brought to the library during that period of time. I think I think the most recent experience is the most important, but it's also like, we we have the the a lot more context here than if Julie were just, you know, just beginning her, you know, role as director.
I couldn't agree with you more on that. I guess, uh, just to to wrap my part at least, I I was thinking of a more generically, if we didn't, if we did have a newer or a different director, perhaps one that we had some issues about and so on, then developing this as a standard platform that would go forward for several years, I guess that's what I had in mind. But I'm I'm more than willing to go with this at least for a year and and let's evaluate it as we go along.
And I think the other part of it, and you know, this is kind of how I view evaluations like this with with anybody at any level, is it's it's a moment in time, but it's not the only moment in time. It's it's a time that we we're setting aside specifically for this discussion, which, you know, I think is the is the benefit of doing it with a timeline and with, you know, more kind of official um, structure around it. But, you know, in the case, Dave, that you're mentioning, if we're ever, God forbid, in a situation where we have a director where we're like, gosh, what what's happening nine months into the year? That shouldn't be the only opportunity we have to address or to talk about that issue as a board. So, I mean, you know, I I it is weird to evaluate someone on nine nine months. I've have roles myself that that's gone like that and it's 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 helpful because it's it's a it's a milestone and it's a way of, you know, wrapping your head around what what's been happening, but it's not the end of the discussion. It's a a moment in the discussion that continues over the course of Julie's time or whoever's time as the director.
Agreed.
Okay, any other comments on the library director evaluation form and process?
I just had a clarification. So Will, is the goal then, Julie, for you to do your self-assessment in the next three weeks?
Well, I would, yeah, I would get that back to you guys, um, probably by the end of next week so that you all could go into the November board meeting um, with the and have that closed session scheduled so that you can do that. Jonathan and I have talked a little bit about process. Um, it that would actually move us to a different platform. We'd be using Zoom instead of go-to-meeting. It's a little bit easier to do the whole closed session thing with that. Um, and Jonathan would then be the um, the organizer of the meeting and be able to stop and then restart a recording. Um, and then I stop and restart the open session recording when that time happens. Um, you can choose to have an agenda item on uh, for after the closed session that would be for any, an action taken uh, because of the closed session discussion. And you can do that. You can just adjourn the open meeting and come back into the meeting and then just adjourn it, whatever you all want to do, as long as we make sure that it's posted on the agenda properly.
Right, I will, ju- just so everyone knows, because Julie and I have talked a little about this, like, we'll work out the logistics before the next meeting to make sure that we, I I actually think I like Julie the idea of if we are going to take some action to just immediately take it after the closed session, just because I think last year we didn't have a December meeting and so just in case we end up not having one, we we need to approve something, let's just approve it in November. Um, you know, you know, so I I think, but but we'll have the process down probably, hopefully in the next couple of weeks and then circulate kind of what that might look like. So yeah, any other, any other questions or comments on the? So yeah, any other, any other questions or comments on the library directory evaluation form and process?
Just pointing out that the next board meeting is three weeks from tonight.
And then do we, is the closed session following the board meeting? That's what I heard you just say. If anyone feels like we're going to have burnout that we'd rather have a closed session on, I don't know if you can just do it on a separate day. I'm okay either way, just throwing it out there.
I kind of think that the, the detailed board evaluation of the director should be in closed, closed session. It's a, it's a,
it's a. No, I agree about that. I'm just asking, do you do it directly following our board meeting? Is everyone fine with that timing?
Yeah, let's, let's try, and Julie and I can work on this, but maybe we'll try to, I mean, we'll, we'll do what we need to do as a board, but maybe things that can be pushed, you know, maybe we push to the following meeting. So we can keep our board meeting a little bit more streamlined and then, you know, so we have a little bit of extra time for the closed meeting and then the open meeting afterwards, if we need to, if we go that route.
Well, the open meeting after, I remember sometimes in groups I've been with, like this one, we actually send the staff home during the closed session and when we come back into open session, we simply move to adjourn or occasionally move the salary motion and then we leave.
Yes, and.
Maybe the cameraman would have to stay. I don't know, but I mean, the, 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 what happens in open session after the closed session is pretty perfunctory normally.
And the closed session, the, the way the agenda is usually structured when the board is anticipating a closed session like this, you just get all your action items out of the way first and then you do your closed session thing. And you can come back and, and do whichever. Now, under our current Open Meetings Act guideline, one of us is going to have to be here no matter what, because if, when you come back in to open session, no matter what, it's got to be technically open, which is one of us sitting here in the library with the, that door unlocked. The one advantage to the whole Zoom thing is that when you guys go to closed session, Jonathan locks the meeting and moves the rest of us to the waiting room. So we will be in the open session meeting just in the waiting room so that when you reopen, then you just let us back in. So that we know when the, we, basically it's how we find out that the, that you guys are done.
I'll let you guys work out the legalities. Just keep it as simple as you can.
We're, I, I completely agree, Dave, with that. We'll keep it, we'll keep it as simple as we can. Do we have a motion, unless we have any additional comments, do we have a motion to approve the library directory evaluation form and process?
To approve the library director, everything you just said is processed.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the library directory evaluation form and process. It has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia? Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the library directory evaluation form and process. We're now on to agenda item 9C, the COVID-19 response and reopening phasing plan. This is the same, this is the same action that we've taken now, I think maybe for eight months, seven months.
Gone too long.
Some number of months. Yeah, for a long time. And the, the action that would be taken, the recommended action is to reauthorize the library director to continue to make temporary policy changes in consultation with the board president and within parameters of COVID-19 response and reopening phasing plan as presented. We have a motion to approve that. Okay, do you have a second? Okay, Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call, please?
Trustee Doherty?
Yes.
Trustee Gagani?
Yes.
Trustee Humphries?
Yes.
Trustee Kuntia?
Yes.
Trustee Stapleton?
Yes.
President Graber?
Yes, thank you very much. Agenda item 9C, the COVID-19 response and reopening phasing plan has been approved. We're now on to agenda item number 10, the library director's report. Julie?
Oh, lots of fun things happening. Rails has indeed rolled back their quarantine to three days. Lots going into that. You can read about it. I forwarded you the email that's got a whole bunch of links. But they were feeling a little bit of pressure from some of the other states that have done statewide guidance as little as one day of quarantine. So, yeah. Jen continues to work on, on our disaster response plan. And Caitlin and Scott have the formatting of the policy manual. I want to thank my administrative team for all of our, their hard work on doing this. That will be like the, other than the library director's evaluation, that will be the big thing of substance on the November board meeting. I don't know that there's going to be a whole lot that's not just the pro forma November things, milestone anniversaries, holidays, board calendar. So we should have a pretty easy agenda for November. Also, I did note in my report, the changes to dates on the Illinois Public Library Per Capita Grant Application and Requirements. As you know, you all received the new serving our public standards for Illinois public libraries. And if you, and as you know, things like this bylaws update and the library director evaluation are all coming straight from that. So we are continuing to work on that. I want to point out that in September, we reached 85% of our CIRC of year, year over year for the month of September. So that's good to see our CIRC stats continuing to climb. And we're, we're feeling though that folks are coming back more and more, particularly on the weekends. And we have been doing a whole bunch of things to give people non-screen opportunities and things to do. We have added a whole bunch of kits, including a ghost hunting kit, sewing machines, a metal detector. And, and more of those are going out all the time. We also added a binge box collection, which are DVDs curated groups of DVDs along with coupons. Thank you, Jen, for getting some coupons from our local businesses to include in those. We started out with a collection of 12. They all checked out within, God, within the first day. And we're already working on, on the second round and, and putting those out. So, and also our board game collection launched. So lots of fun things going on at the library.
Thank you very much, Julie. We're now on to agenda item 11, trustee comments and requests for information. Do we have any trustee comments and/or requests for information? Mr. Humphries?
Your comment about Rails setting the, the quarantining at three days. I'm not speaking for anybody except myself, but I think that our library staff should set that quarantining length of quarantine of materials so that they feel comfortable working in the library, even if it does not agree with Rails.
If you remember, we had, we were at a three-day quarantine and only went back up to the seven day because Rails required it for anything going into the delivery. So far, the staff has been very on board with this, especially as we get further and further into finding out more about the virus and that fomite transmission, that the transmission from objects is definitely, it's not the primary way that this virus gets around. And so I think staff's com, staff's comfort level is there for this change.
Fine. Okay, any additional trustee comments or requests for information?
Are the men still on the roof?
I don't know. I haven't seen John Martin. Oh, I also.
I saw him this afternoon.
Yeah. I, I do want to note that we will have three members of our management team on leaves of some kind as of this week. So.
All right. I think unless we have any additional trustee comments or requests for information, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone.